Stragglers can get here when they get here, how's that? Andrea, you have to do something now.
I think Aaron is going to.
Aaron, Aaron's gonna open it up.
Yeah, Aaron's on the control, so, uh, yeah.
We're streaming live.
You can go, are we? It says we're going, okay, good. So, the land acknowledgement, uh, we respectfully acknowledge that the county of the Halliburton is located on Treaty 20, Mishi Sagi Territory and in the traditional territory of the Mishi Sagi and Chipewa Nations collectively known as the Williams Treaties First Nations, which are Curragh Lake, Rama, Hayawatha, Aldreville, Skugog Island, Otsbolsore, and Georgina Island First Nations. We acknowledge a shared presence of indigenous nations throughout the area and we recognize its original indigenous inhabitants as a steward of its lands, waters, since time immemorial. Done, okay. Adoption of minutes. Any issues on the minutes? Okay, I have a louver, can a second or please, move by. Jennifer, seconded by Dell. Anybody opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Uh, consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of the adoption of the draft minutes from the last regular meeting.
Oh, no, we, we just need to talk.
I'm sorry, excuse me, I meant to do declaration of interest rather than the minutes.
And number three, I just need to add, uh, um, to the agenda today, an update.
Okay.
So, um, just to, uh, give it, that's again, uh, to give a Dorset update, uh, in the new business section.
Okay.
We'll do that right before the presentation.
Okay, great. Now, I'll get back to where I'm supposed to be. Declaration of pecuniary interest, anybody have any interest at all? Okay, thank you. We're gonna do the consent agenda, which consists of the draft minutes, the librarian's report.
Can people at home, uh, here? Okay.
The chair's, the chair's report, circulation, statistics and working committee report. Um, does anybody have any questions on any of those items before I ask for a motion?
I do have a question, please, on the, uh, circulation statistics.
Yeah.
Just for, um, to help me get up to speed. When, um, the, the numbers, let's take for example, um, Stanhope branch. When you, what do those numbers mean? Do those numbers mean, um, books actually picked up and borrowed at the Stanhope branch, or does that mean, uh, patrons whose home branch is Stanhope picking up books anywhere in the system?
Hmm, it's a good question. Um, if you saw this, uh, during the pandemic when Stanhope was closed, uh, there were still numbers active, so there are some, uh, recording of books that, uh, originate in Stanhope, uh, that are shipped to other, uh, branches and, and then circulated in that sense. Um, but now what you're seeing is, uh, conflation of books that are, um, originate there and are used elsewhere, but then also, uh, actual statistics for books that are taken by those residents in situ. Does that make sense? There's, there's not really any way, I don't think, to demarcate the two, two numbers, but they are, uh, much lower for the ones that, you know, come off the shelf in Stanhope.
Okay, so if I'm a, if my home branch is Stanhope and I pick up a book in Minden, where is that counted?
Uh, it would be for Stanhope, yeah, yeah. So, um, basically, uh, we, we, uh, this as a baseline screenshot, so we can look at over time to see how it changes and, uh, that's the great thing about having all branches, uh, going full steam ahead now.
Right.
But, uh, one thing I will say about the circulation statistics is due to some great work from the team, especially Aaron, uh, this is a fully, um, accessible document now, doesn't look much different than it did, uh, last month. However, um, it's been stripped of all the math and, uh, stuff that would be very confusing for a screen reader, so, um, going forward, all of our documentation is headed in this direction. I understand my librarian's report is about eighty percent there, I'm still learning. Um, the financial report is not there at all yet, but we're getting there.
Thank you very much.
Good question. Um, any other questions? Okay, could I have a motion to, uh, move and second the, um, consent agenda, please?
Hold on.
Adele, seconded by, oh, okay. Anybody opposed? Motion carried. I'm just putting the first name.
That's fine, yeah, that's all, I'm not getting anything, so.
Okay, we're gonna move to the, uh, um, financial reports.
Great. Okay, so, um, I apologize last time because our format had changed and yet again, uh, because the budget hasn't been passed until, I believe, today. Is that the case, Lisa, Jennifer and Cease? The budget is wrapped up?
It didn't get passed today, we didn't discuss it at all.
Okay, so that's. Committee of the whole.
At the end of the month.
Okay. Um, well, the good news is, is they have started populating our financial software again, um, but all, like a full glimpse of the numbers is, uh, is scheduled to be when, you know, everything's been approved. So for now, I have asked the finance department, they were in the middle of their audit, uh, this week. Um, we were involved, obviously, but, um, this is just a snapshot of some of the line items, the crucial ones for, uh, for the library. So, again, it's a different format and I apologize, it's just not what we normally do. But if there's any questions, I mean, we're on track in a lot of areas for, um, where we should be. We've received, uh, funding that's, um, probably not showing. Oh, it is showing here, contribution from others, twenty-six hundred twenty-nine. Um, so this is money that came mostly from the Friends for the, um, uh, Evergreen Collection, as well as funding that we're already starting to receive for the Radon, uh, screening detectors and, um, ukuleles.
Really great, um, article in, one of the islanders won't get back, it's printing about, and they got a fellow up at the, uh, Hylasbury that is, is playing and selling ukulele.
Yes, so that's our contact for.
I know the couple that own that.
Michael, and, yeah, he's really enthusiastic and, and they're interested in helping us and the Friends and by potentially offering us, uh, ukuleles at a great price.
Yeah.
So, that's gonna be a game changer.
Hope he still makes his beer, very good. Okay, any, uh, questions on the financial report? Seeing none, can I have a second or please? Seconded by, I'm gonna look at the screen, seconded by Lisa. Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Okay, now, we're gonna deal with the policies now. The policy committee has met a few times and gone over a number of policies, which are the ones that are here today, I think they are, Chris, correct?
Yeah, so there's the.
And you, obviously, you wanted to add, um, update, no, that's later on. Two policies, um, leave of absence and, uh, library fees.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So, the main, um, feature of the, uh, leave of absence, uh, policy was some basic wording around, um, uh, clarifying what the part-time staff, uh, receive, which is, uh, two P E L days and the fourteen, uh, hours paid sick time. So this was a recommendation by the HR department back in January, and I just kind of fought with it away until we had a policy committee. Um, and we talked about that and, um, it was just a, uh, an addition of the word, uh, part-time. Um, this, the disadvantage of having it in grayscale, I was, is I can't see any the, um, uh, tracking, but, uh, yeah, the word part-time. Um, and, uh, so that one was fairly straightforward and then for inclusion in the package, we also put the request for leave of absence form, which Tessa, um, uh, our marketing communications person has, uh, updated the logo and made it more modern, so these, the policy and the form, uh, more or less go together. And, uh, there wasn't a suggestion for a line to, um, have staff that, um, requests time off in the neighborhood of about twenty-one days, three weeks, uh, to fill out the form and it would be subject to library CEO approval. And that's only because it would be quite rare if this were to happen, but we do foresee a, a potential for uh, two people wanting to take holidays at the same time. And when we only have twelve, uh, you know, or fourteen branch staff, uh, it might limit our ability to keep the branches running, especially in the winter. So there were good suggestions, uh, we've incorporated them here and, uh, the policy committee has signed off on it, but it needs to be, um, approved by the, the full board.
Any questions on either of those, the fees or the policies? Being on over there, Chris, uh, Cease, got your hand up?
Nope.
Okay. All right, so, um, I have a motion, be it resolved that the Halliburton County Public Library receives the library fees policy, OP one-six, and the library fees schedule, an appendix document OP one-six, and that the board approves policy as presented. Moved by. Adele. I like that, Adele, you're all, got your hand, that's good. And seconded by Jennifer. Okay. Leave of absence policy. Any questions on that? Seeing none, could I have a louver in a second or please? Moved by Cease, thank you, Cease. Seconded by Dell. All right, now. Okay.
Okay, so we also, uh, oversaw some changes to the, uh, library fees policy. Um, you'll notice a bit more, uh, updated wording, mainly, uh, a list of, um, the fees that are, uh, incurred by, uh, patrons uh, and ones that are no longer, uh, uh, charged, such as the fax service. Recently, uh, don't offer fax service because we are able to offer, um, scanning and all the staff have been trained to do that. Um, and in fact, we learned that, uh, local fax services are much cheaper in places like H and R Block, which is just a half a block away from the office, and we, we didn't want to undercut, uh, our competitors. So, um, uh, for the most part, the policy itself is very short and, um, the changes are, are minor. Um, the fee schedule, uh, once it's approved, is, is now going to go up on our new website, again, a, a fully accessible version, and it'll be made available in all the branches. Um, uh, are there any questions about the policy itself?
I apologize, I haven't noticed this before, but I don't see, um, the late fees on this schedule that we have discussed in.
Okay.
Policy meeting.
So it's, it's actually mentioned in the second line of the policy, uh, itself, to remove barriers of service, HCPL does not charge, uh, late fines. Um, I mean, we could for sure add it to, um, the fee schedule. I mean, it's not technically a fee because it doesn't, we don't charge them, but.
Right.
We don't charge for late returns at all.
No, that was a, uh, a change that was made. Uh, we were actually ahead of the curve for most libraries, including very large ones, uh, throughout Ontario, um, by doing that earlier. In fact, we did it before COVID even started.
Yeah.
What do you do if a book doesn't come back?
So, um.
Cancel the library card, cut right off the bat.
It's a great question, though. Um, we, we do get the benefit of the doubt, uh, to give them some time to look for it, we'll sometimes renew the book or movie. Um, uh, there is, um, uh, you know, if a book is damaged, then we can charge them a fee for that.
Yeah.
But if it's completely lost and it's unsure, like if they've told us that they've, um, returned it, uh, and they've not, uh, done it as a pattern, then we would forgive it, uh, for the most part. I mean, but, uh, yeah, it is, uh, something that libraries tend to write off. In my last library, it was a debate between, uh, spending money on RFID and sensors to measure books going missing versus, uh, saying, okay, well, four to ten percent, uh, we'll just create as a loss over time. Um, good point.
So, so you don't then put on the, uh, on the fee schedule that there is no charge for?
I don't think we would need to, but it would definitely, uh, when we post it to the website, it would be a good place, if it's not already, uh, indicated, to put it there, because it is something we're quite proud of.
Yes.
And it should be. Um, uh, it was a great decision, I think, for reducing, uh, errors. You can imagine, like, a, a nine-year-old, when you tell them, you know, you've broken our laws, uh, uh, you know, we don't, we don't want to discourage people, especially our earliest customers, uh, patrons, so.
I told you about the library that I dealt with when I was a kid.
In the jail, so.
In the jail.
Yeah.
And all your stuff was there, so, I mean, go on. So they had you right where they wanted you.
Right.
They could have closed the door and grabbed a lock.
That's great. Chris, I have a question.
Yes.
And, uh, it's probably straightforward, the, the prices you're charging for things like a projector, as an example, five hundred bucks. Is that, would that cover the cost of it not coming back or getting broken beyond repair?
So not in every case. I mean, we have a baseline price because, uh, especially with technology, the price changes. But, uh, what it does help is offset the cost of, um, staff time to, uh, source another one.
Yeah.
Recatalog it, take the packaging away and, uh, get it back in, in the, in the flow of lending. So it's, it's kind of meeting, in most cases, people halfway. I mean, in the case of HDMI cables, Aaron was able to source them in bulk now, and we just started having them go missing here, there and everywhere, and now we have them standing by.
Perfect.
Um, but, yeah, I mean, we try to pick prices that aren't cost prohibitive. I mean, the, the exception here is the cost of a projector, because they really are a fair, yeah, uh, chunk of money. Um, we did add a few things in, uh, apologies for those that had the grayscale. Um, for example, the change recommended was two hundred dollars for a screen. We hadn't lent screens before, but we decided, um, that we would, because we had some requests and, uh, we needed to put some value on it. So, a- and actually, to be fair, when we met the policy committee, we didn't have all the numbers in place, but we now, we now more or less do. Um, uh, and then we added the button maker as well, because that sometimes goes out. Um, and then, uh, the hardcover or trade paperback books, uh, in the past only referred to, um, adults, but in this case, we're able to hold, uh, young adults sort of accountable as well for their materials. So they're included there. Um, what else?
Laminating.
Oh, the parks and skating passes, and then, yes, lamination. Um, we've had an increase in lamination over time, and so we have made a, um, a line item for non-standard sizes, like larger stuff. Um.
And are all these available at every branch?
So, in the case of, um, the screen, for example, like, we have to bring it in from Woberforce, but because the courier goes twice a week, it's not, it's not a problem. Um, okay, make it happen. And there's a question, and somebody got a question on the cheese, go ahead, and then Jennifer.
Yeah, ju- just to keep up with the times, Chris, I, I, I see that you're, you've taken out, uh, the, you know, the inter, uh, library charges, and then you also took out fax service, which, which makes sense, but I'm gonna ask a question, and I think the I, the answer is gonna be related to IT challenges. But I'm gonna ask it anyway. Uh, a lot of people now are looking at scanning. And, and the idea, of course, once the scan is made, it has to be saved onto something. And I can understand, uh, people, uh, well, I don't like March would have a heart attack if we started to put flash drives in there that he has nothing to do about. But I'm wondering, would it be a, a service that if we supplied the, 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 uh, flash drives themselves, because you can get them pretty cheap now? Would it be a service that might be of value? For instance, if I had something that I needed to get scanned, I could take it to the library, I could have it scanned, and then the library would supply me with a flash drive, which obviously would be, um, you know, uh, IT compatible. And then, and then they could, I could take it home with me. Uh, or is that a service that maybe is beyond our scope at this point?
Yeah, I mean, uh, you, you're, you're hitting the high notes of all the considerations. I, I, I don't think IT is thrilled about having, um, uh, flash drives going in and out of library software generally, but, um, people do bring their own, uh, to work on the cat computers, and that's fine. Um, we just recommend safe ejection in that case. But what the workaround and the, the reference that I made to staff being trained about scanning is such that they can send scans directly to the email inbox for that person. So by the time they get home, it's already there, and that's been the workaround that we, we typically use. But we have helped a lady just most recently, a couple of weeks ago, uh, with all her photos, consolidating those from an old stick, and, um, she learned, we taught her how to scan those, uh, or sorry, email those to herself, so she had a record of them in the future as well. Um, well, everything is, is sort of, uh, it, it's, it's interesting. Software as a service is really changing libraries, and so that idea of not using the, uh, hard, hard technology like the drives, um, and just having it on the cloud is, is becoming more useful, but, yeah. But we do often have things like ear, earbuds that we can sell very cheaply, like two dollars, uh, a set, and we have stuff like that standing by, and we could talk about having cheap flash drives.
But I, I guess my question would be, is it, is if that's a viable service, would it not be something that we could, we could charge for as long as we're intelligent about doing it, like a buck or two bucks or whatever it is that we're charging? Would, would, would that be something, or would we just wanna stay away from that right now?
Well, I think, uh, my next step would be to just consult Aaron and Mike March, like you say, just about, um, best practices, and, uh, if we can steer people towards the one that makes the most sense and reduces steps for staff as well, and that's the, the advantageous route. But, uh, we all always want to, um, be mindful that not everyone's on the same page. Like, we, we did keep faxing uh, as a service for a very long time, uh, despite the fact that, you know, even some government offices no longer, uh, have it. Um, so, yeah, having said that, I'll do some investigation.
Thank you, Cease. Uh, Jennifer.
Um, if I could just take us back to late fees for a moment, or the absence thereof. Once upon a time, I saw, I believe it was a meme on the internet, forgive me for that, reference to a library down in the States that instead of having late fees for children, the fee was, um, fifteen minutes independent quiet reading time for each day that a book was late. And I know that we're on a different channel now because we don't, we don't charge a late fee, but I wonder if the board has ever kind of tickled with that idea, especially with, uh, with reference to youth, of integrating independent reading into the, the accountability towards an interaction with the library.
So, I mean, off the top of my head, I, I am familiar with that meme, or at least the campaign, and it is, uh, something that libraries might do just as a way to generate, like, a great news story about, hey, we turned a punitive measure into something positive. Um, but for some kids, I would say that, uh, from a librarian's perspective, it is still considered uh, punitive in, in their minds, and we don't, we really just try to stay away from, uh, creating any negative, uh, vibe about, um, uh, about, you know, you've not returned your book back on time. At the end of the day, i- it doesn't cost us anything to waive those fees, but I am all for a great campaign and, uh, you know, if we were doing it fairly so that board members were being, uh, uh, maybe punished and, and, uh, adults, like the parents too, and maybe even the librarians, because I've returned things.
Can you imagine fifteen minutes without your phone?
Um, but, yeah, no, I'm glad that you're, uh, uh, keeping abreast of, like, some of these trends, because they're actually really interesting, and libraries do beg, borrow and steal ideas all the time. And there's no reason why we can't, uh, do something fun and exciting every now and then.
Thanks, Jennifer. That was a, that was a fantastic point, thank you. Okay, um, any further questions? Paul, sorry, it is you.
I just, oh, I just, pardon, I'm sorry. Um, I, I have a question, and I, I'm not sure how to phrase it, um, but I'm just curious if any of the offerings here, the, the rental or bore, I'd say rental, um, the borrowing offerings, if they've been vetted or screened against, uh, you know, private service available outside, if there's a rental, it's renting overhead projectors or screens or something, if we're, you know, stepping on anybody's toes that way, and if not, then, uh, great, I just want to make sure that that was raised.
Yeah, I mean, we often do surveys, especially when our printer was down in Minden, to just see what other, uh, services are available, so we can send people somewhere. Um, and through that, we'll often learn what the value of their charging is, and in some cases, uh, we're higher and in other cases we're lower, so, um, I mean, it's just a matter of using staff time to sort of do those, uh, investigations, but for the most part, we're, uh, actually below a lot of libraries for what we charge, uh, say, for, for printing and photocopying. Um, because we did, we did a survey about that, and I, I've been sort of waiting so the discussion and questions dive down to bring up the fact that the one thing you'll notice on here is, um, uh, the two asterisks at photocopying and printing, they used to, uh, refer to a sentence at the bottom of the fee schedule that said, um, this is on hold now, it's, uh, pay what you can for printing or by donation. Um, what we proposed to the, uh, policy committee was that we would uh, revert back to, uh, three years ago, pre-pandemic, where we actually did charge the fifteen cents per page. Um, mainly because, uh, we started to run the numbers over the last year, and we paid, uh, a very high amount for printing, giving away the free printing. We, uh, to put it in perspective, we, uh, spent eleven thousand seven hundred in twenty-twenty-two on printing paper and shipping um, of the paper, uh, and, and we recouped about forty-six hundred dollars. So that's seven thousand dollars walked at the door, and it's not a sustainable number, and I'm very proud, again, that the library chose, the board chose to waive these fees for a, a good chunk of time. Um, many libraries return to charging for printing, uh, a year or more. Um, but we, we do feel that it's time to, uh, start to recoup those costs so that we can make other things possible in the, in the library.
Great. Thanks, Paul. Good question. Anything else? I don't see any other hands up anywhere. Okay, um, I have a motion that be it resolved that the Halliburton County Public Library Board receives the library fees policy, OP sixteen, and the library fee schedule and, 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 and appendix document OP sixteen, and that the board approves policy as amended. Moved by. Paul? Seconded by, I'm looking at Tim. I think, I think Tim had his hand up first, Cease. I'll, I'll put your louver on the next one.
Yeah, yeah. So there's one thing, uh, we didn't, we talked about fees, but we didn't talk about hours.
I think I have a motion for that.
Yeah.
Closing on, closing on the Easter.
Yeah, can I just bring that up?
Yeah, yeah, I've got a separate motion on it.
Okay, so normally when we talk about fees, uh, we, we do it with hours, and we normally do it in the fall, as you'll recall, because it's usually in preparation for Christmas. But one of the things that came up last year was the recognition that from basically Christmas to summer, when we really get, uh, going, uh, full bore, uh, the, the only break in between is Easter, and in the past, staff, we, we do close on the Friday and the Monday, but staff come in on the Saturday, uh, branch staff to all locations, but, uh, it means that they're unable to travel to see their families in that middle of the spring period. So last year, we did a trial where we closed on the Saturday. Um, we actually didn't hear anything from the public in terms of, uh, it being a negative, uh, choice. We put blankets down to catch the books in case there was a large uh, number, as we do at Christmas, uh, to capture in our bins. Um, and then we would shut the, the library down, uh, and give everyone a break before we really ramp up for, for summertime. So the, we talked about it with the, uh, committee because there were new members, uh, and there are new members on the board, obviously, that, uh, may not know that from last year, but we're just, uh, looking for, uh, support, yea, yea or nay, if that's something that we want to continue.
Any questions on that? Okay, I have a motion that addresses that be it resolved that the Halliburton County Public Library Board accepts the proposal to close the library branches on the Saturday of the Easter weekend. Cease, you moved it. Seconded by, uh,
Lisa.
Who, Lisa?
Lisa.
I apologize, I'm looking at a table and a screen at the same time. Anybody opposed? Motion carried, thank you very much.
Thank you.
There you go. Okay, now we're gonna move into.
Uh, one more item, maybe add Dorset one.
Want to do that now?
Yeah.
All right.
Um, so, uh, as you can imagine, I have conversations all the time to, all over the place, and I lose track of what I've told people. But I did go back into the last two meetings and I've neglected to mention, uh, that it, uh, I've noticed the lockers indoors that are starting to, uh, get a bit of surface rust. Um, I think this is on the lower portions of the lockers, only because, um, the salt's coming off the road and the, the lake breeze and whatnot. So it's unfortunate, I mean, we have always said that the lockers there were a temporary arrangement, and they were not designed to be, uh, outdoor lockers, they're interior high school lockers. But we thought because of the, um, protection from, uh, Robinson's, uh, kiosk, or the, sort of the alcove there. Uh, however, um, uh, my intention was to, you know, scrape off the surface rust, and we were gonna be, we, we plan to be, uh, adding a, a vinyl face on the front, which, uh, will include uh, local artists', uh, artwork, um, on two of the lockers, and then one locker would be, um, probably the one that you see most prominently, uh, the library logo, maybe even a library, a card, to, to really show what the, the lockers are about and sort of generate some new interest. I have been putting that off mainly because it's not easy to do in winter, but also we, we're still waiting to hear about the fate of, um, the property. So, uh, just to let you know that we, I, um, we did hear from a, a patron about the, the rust, so it's, uh, fair to, to, to bring up to speed on that, but, uh, I, I have been mindful of it. I did go up and replace all of the numbers, um, and put, uh, Mylar plastic over top so that, uh, those numbers don't fade, because the sunshine was getting to, to them. But for the most part, they're holding up not too bad, given that they're outdoors twenty-four seven. Um, and I have started to plant the seed, just, uh, as I do know that the discussion about the Dorset Rec Center is, uh, up and running. Um, about, you know, potentially including the library once again, uh, for a more. about, you know, potentially including the library once again for a more indoor locker setup. But I have some fine examples that are being produced now by a company called Biboteka. Of course, we do FRP or whatever because they're fairly expensive, but they actually have a, an iPad built in. You can do your holds right there. The driver goes up, pushes a button and all the doors fly open so they don't have to each individual lock. So there's a really a nice example of what that could be for future Dorset Depot locker setups. And it would also include different sizes for items that we might, like a projector could go in a larger box. It's like a Canada Post style.
Great.
So, yeah, the price, how much, the question is, I don't know for sure, but I think they're in the neighborhood of twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars. I mean, they're rubberized paint, they're gorgeous, they're painted in the library logo colors of your library. I've seen them in the wild in a, in a high-end hotel in Toronto where Amazon supplied one so that you could get your Amazon packages right to your hotel room. So, yeah, I mean, they're state of the art and they're wonderful. But what we really love is the fact that the drivers would save, you know, probably twenty minutes in opening and closing. And that we would also be able to offer holds, pickups along with holds. Make your hold there.
For a future discussion on a budget.
Yeah.
And it sounds like to me that you retired just too soon to take advantage of all this stuff.
You can imagine like up there when it's minus twenty with the wind coming off the lake and you're trying to open a little tiny, you know, luggage locker.
Yes, that's true. Thank you. Any other questions? Paul, sorry.
Maybe it's something that we can plant the seed with the friends to aspire to something like that in the future.
Yeah, I mean, the friends typically support us for programming and fun stuff for families. But, I mean, as a facility, we would, we have a budget for, you know, what we used to offer Dorset in that same building. So, you know, if the remediation goes well and, you know, I'm hopeful that we could be included. And there's some more questions, I think.
Oh, Jennifer.
Thanks very much. On Dorset, I wonder if we might schedule for an upcoming agenda a bit of time to discuss the Dorset situation, to get caught up for the new members of council, including myself, on the history of the decision to close the Dorset Library, how we got to the setup that we've got currently. And then in view of the Rec Center absolutely coming open again, you know, ideally in the next number of months ahead, whether there is a sort of a crack of light there to, to sort of look at the Dorset Library question again, perhaps not in full, perhaps not the way it fully used to be. But for the board, for this new board, to sort of sit down and have a collective think on services in Dorset, given that there are a couple of opportunities up ahead. Could we put that on the schedule for an upcoming meeting?
Sure thing.
Welcome.
A great idea, Jennifer. Thank you.
That'd be great.
Good.
Because I, you know, I represent half of the Algonquin Highlands population of Dorset in my ward. And boy, oh, boy, they do really miss that, that physical library service. And I just want to make sure that those voices are heard at this fresh new table as well at the board.
Thanks for the suggestion.
Great idea. Thank you. Put that on an upcoming agenda. Okay, anything else before I go on to nine point three, which is programming and outreach? Is Hillary gonna do something?
Yeah, so each of our departmental staff are gonna do a presentation. At the end of each board meeting.
There you go.
Welcome. So just for those that you may not have met Hillary before, she came to us about last summer and has revolutionized, you know, the way in which we're rolling programs across the system. So she's come to us from Windsor Public Library with family in the Peterborough area. And, yeah, programming and outreach coordinator. Thrilled to hear from her.
Windsor's my old alma mater, Hillary.
Oh, is it? I really liked it there.
Used to work part-time in the library when I was at university.
Oh, wow.
University library, not the public library.
Yeah, yeah. Very different experience.
All right.
Thank you. Can everyone see my screen? The slideshow? Yeah, okay, perfect. So as Chris mentioned, my name's Hillary. I'm the program and outreach coordinator. I've been here about seven or eight months now. So today, I'm just going to take you through some stuff that we've been doing and what we have planned for twenty twenty-three. So this is just what I'm going to talk about. We're going to talk about some statistics that we've collected so far through the winter, mainly January, February. Talk a little bit about spring, including March break, which is coming up next week. A little discussion on summer. We've already started to plan for our summer reading and then just wrap it up with some outreach opportunities we have. So, winter twenty twenty-three. So we started off with a great year. So in January, we had a total of four hundred and eighty-eight people attend programs across the county. And then I just wrapped up February stats. I didn't have time to get into the slideshow before it was published. But I can tell you that in February, we had a total of five hundred and ten people attending programs across the county. So this is growing and I expect it to grow more and more as the weather gets nicer, more people want to come out of their houses. And we should have a great turnout for March break next week. Just to highlight some popular programs that we have had over the winter so far. So in January, we started a new monthly trivia, which goes out online on our social media channels and on our website. January was Happy New Year and we had a total of forty-six people testing their knowledge. And then we got to post kind of how everybody did. So it was very popular and people seemed to enjoy it. The Minden Craft Table has been really popular in the first week of January. We set it out to coincide with the holidays for the schoolchildren. And we had ninety-one kids drop in over that first week to make crafts during their visits. The writer circle and the ukulele group have been growing in attendance. And they've been going consistently for a couple of months now, so we're really excited with that. And then Afternoon with Ancestors, hosted by our very own Adele, has been one of our most consistent programs and one that people often call about and ask to make sure she's going to be there. Couple of popular programs for February so far, we did our last French Storytime, which had eighteen kids attend. This is the best so far. And it was our last one, actually. So it was a collaboration with Canadian Parents for French. And they donated some money for some new books, which have been flying off the shelf. It was a really great partnership we had.
Hillary, just a quick, are these children fluently bilingual or learning it in school?
Both. So the French parent, or Canadian parents for French, most of them seem to be fluent. But the, this program was bilingual, so it was in French and English. So to kind of promote French literacy to families that don't speak it fluently. So we had a lot, so the kids were mixed with both of their levels.
That's excellent. I'm bilingual. I should say I used to be bilingual. I was when I was a child. I could speak fluently French and English back and forth. As I got older and moved away from French-speaking communities, at least I think you're on the call, you'll get a chuckle out of this, as I moved from French-speaking Sudbury to English-speaking Mississauga, I kind of lost it all. Anyway, sorry.
Okay, no, it was, it was great to see, to see them come out and we got some great discussion about it. And so going back to February, so we also had some great drop-in crafts. They seem to be very popular. We do a monthly Lego challenge. The picture here, you can see it was February, it was build a cake. So every branch now has their own set of Lego and kids can drop in anytime to try their challenge and to set their creation up for the month. I've been running regular family story times. And we did our second run for Shaking the Shoot, which was a program geared for ages two to five. I had great feedback from the one in February. The families left really happy with really tired kids. And a lot of them stayed and played with the Lego and checked out books. So it was a great opportunity to get them to extend their stay and make their trip into town well worth it. Okay, so now jumping into spring twenty twenty-three, so what we have coming up. So we plan on keeping a lot of our regular recurring programs, including the ones I mentioned, like Storytime and Shaking the Shoot and Drop and Craft. We're also going to continue our monthly trivia challenge. A lot of people are participating with that. So we're going to keep going with that every month. And then we are hopefully, starting in April, a brand-new French conversation circle, which actually came out from the French Storytime. We had someone approach us wanting to volunteer. So it's going to happen in the Dicert branch once a month. And it's going to be a place for French speakers and French learners to come and learn from each other and just converse in French. And some two special programs I wanted to highlight for spring is we have a tech help session with Mona, who's going to be doing a session next week, actually, March fourteenth, about online shopping and the safety tricks to go with that. This will be her third session with us. And then we have Community Legal Clinic coming in in April and May, once in Minden, once in Dicert. And they're going to be running a workshop on will and estate planning. So I'm very excited for those ones. So we've been having some really successful programming overall so far. The past five months, I've been using AppSo. Some of you may know I get fifty hours a week that I can allocate for programming. So I've been using the maximum for the last five months. And it really shows in the amount of programs that we've been able to offer everyone. And we've really been able to increase the types of programs we have, not just in Minden and Dicert, but also in some of our smaller libraries that are single-staffed. Just wanted to touch briefly on passive programming. So passive programming is anything where a staff member doesn't need to be in attendance during the full time. It's something that we set out and let people, people do at their own pace, like Lego. We did some new ones this year. So we have a stick-together poster at Wilberforce in Highland Grove. Pictured here is the one at Wilberforce. So it's kind of like a paint-by-numbers, but instead it's these small square stickers and a grid that you get to stick it on. It's been very popular so far. And this one in Wilberforce is starting to take shape and people return to kind of see what's happening and if they're going to be able to guess the image. We also did a county-wide guessing game in February. So forty-two people wrote in and guessed how many physical copies of books we have at HVPL. Guesses ranged from a hundred books to a million books. The real answer was sixty-one thousand six hundred and ninety-one, which is taken from our twenty twenty-two annual board report. We had three winners, one for a kid, one for adult and one for teens. And I am happy to report that one of the winners was one of our Dorset patrons. So we sent out our ballots with information to, into all the lockers and we had two people write back. And one of them were the winners. So I was really excited to see them getting to participate in some programming. Okay, and finally, for spring tomorrow, or not tomorrow, next week is March break. So we are full steam ahead with that. We have over fifteen programs planned for kids of all ages. You can see this is just the week's schedule here. I'm not going to touch on all of them. But we have programs ranging from crafts to literacy to some STEM activities. And we have programs that are going out to some of the smaller branches too, which I'm very excited about. March break is a great time for us to connect with families and children and to bring them into the library and show them all the good stuff we have going on. Okay, jumping in, summer twenty twenty-three. So believe it or not, we are already starting to plan for the summer. It's one of the busiest times we have of the year, so we have to get a head start. So again, this year, we're going to participate in the TV Summer Reading Club. This is something we've done every year. So I've already put in the submission for our reading logs and stickers. So these are little booklets that we hand out to kids over the summer where they get to log what they're reading. And then we encourage them to come back and report to us and tell them, tell us what they're doing. This year, we're going to launch a new set of programs called the Summer Explorers. And these are programs that are going to be aimed for ages six to twelve. And this label is going to be used to designate them as special summer programs. We're also going to continue with our Adult Book Bingo. So I did that. It was one of my first projects I did last summer. And it was a way to encourage adults to participate in the Summer Reading Fund. And it also encouraged them to read outside of their genre. So we encourage them to read something in science fiction, something in history. And also encourage them to read magazine or e-resources. So it really helps promote different, different resources that we have that they may not be familiar with. So we're going to run that again this year. And then we have, already have our local drag queen set to do two drag queen storytimes over the week of Minden Pride Week. We ran two last year and they were very popular, so I'm expecting them to be just as popular this year. Finally, for summer, so we put in two grant applications to hire two summer students through the Young Canada Works Program. So this funding would help to pay for the wages for these two students if we are successful. These two jobs would come in. It would help do a tech inventory, so to look at all the maker equipment and the tech equipment that we have, make sure it's still working. It would develop new programs with them. And then over July and August, they would go out and run these programs to all our branches. Okay, and finally, I just want to quickly touch on some outreach opportunities that we have. So overall, for twenty twenty-three, I expect us to have a lot more opportunities for outreach than we have in the past couple of years as kind of the world opens up again and everyone's restarted. So we've already went to the Repair Cafe. This first picture here, with my left, shows one of our staff members on, in February, doing a tinker table for kids during the Repair Cafe with search. And we're going to attend again in March. I am set to attend the Winter Carnival at Archie Stoffer, which is tomorrow. So I'm going to go there to promote March break programs, make some library cards and offer craft for kids. And then I've already chatted with people from the Wilberforce Agricultural Fair and the Halliburton County Fair and have agreed to attend those this summer and offer a program for kids. And it'll be a great place for us to promote all our resources and all the fun stuff we have going on in the summer. And that's it. Does anyone have questions?
Any questions? I don't see, oh, Cece? Cecil?
I have, I have to ask a loaded question. What is Book Bingo?
Book Bingo, yes. So Book Bingo is we provide a, like a bingo card, a full sheet bingo card. And each square has something different. So it might be read a science fiction book or check out a magazine from the library or go to a program at the library. So they would fill it out as they go through their summer reading. And every line they get, they get a ballot. And then at the end of the summer, we do a draw. Last year, we did it for a gift card to Master of Books.
Very good.
And you can sign up, Cece, if you want.
Yes, you can. It's a lot of fun.
Jennifer, go ahead.
Just wanted to say how delighted I am to see Drag Queen Storytime. I know that that has not been well-received in some communities around North America. And I'm delighted that Halliburton supports that, backs that and that it's a good turnout. I think it's a beautiful opportunity for young kids to understand, you know, the variety of, of, of people, of humanity within our community and our culture. And I'm just so, so happy to see it here. So thanks to the board for supporting that.
And I think a special thanks for Chris, really moving that forward.
All the staff. I mean, we are anticipating, as always, some questions or even people upset about it. But the staff handle it very gracefully and remind people that taxpayers are composed of all types of families. And we're very pleased to have everyone welcome at the library.
Yeah, it was very well received last year. Well done. Any questions from the table? Seeing none. Anybody else on the screen? Seeing none. Chris, you have a question or a comment?
Sure, yeah. I just wanted to follow up by saying the one takeaway for me, when I heard Hillary's talk planned, is that we, we've been nudging up to the fifty-hour mark of the hours that are allotted for programming each month, which is a good thing. It's a testament to the fact that we're, we're using them. We, over the course of the pandemic, we really didn't use, we started out with, with some video making from home and whatnot as we're trying to engage staff in many ways. But for the most part, there were, you know, over a hundred hours that just never got used over the last three years. Given that we're, we're putting printing costs back into the library branches, it will offset some future costs. And, you know, at this point, I'm just planting the seed, but we could have a discussion at some point about increasing those if continued success happens in Hillary's department. Because another, you know, eight or twelve hours represents, you know, one or two hours more per month for each branch, giving us a chance to further create partnerships. Because we often have to say no to people when they pitch a great idea to volunteer because we still have to match that with staff time and preparation. So it is something that we could make possible without changing the budget, I think. But we would want to chat with you about, you know, what that looks like. with you about, you know, what that looks like, because it has to be sustainable into the future. If you say we're do, we're doing sixty hours now, that is a, a change.
Yeah. I, I, you know, I, I can't tell you how peace I am with, with the fact that that, you know, you think of a library, go get a book and I'm reading, I'm bringing it back. That's no longer, you know, as preeminent as it used to be. All this other stuff that libraries are doing now, in hours and predictor, I think it's just fantastic. Outreach is really, really positive.
Thanks for saying.
So Hillary, congratulations. I really think you're doing a great job.
As we transition to a, a world in which we're able to use a van to sort of promote and create buzz everywhere. You know, meeting that with the staff time to make sure that those events are successful is, is going to be the challenge, because we do, when we made the hours change most recently to, to have some branches open at different times and, and also later at night. One of the things we discovered is that Wilberforce, we needed to send someone out there A to run programming, but also to cover lunches for that person who, whose time changed. So we, we actually had to start using, I think, ten percent of those hours each.
I, I've been involved with the Wilberforce Fair, not as much as I used to, but still on the periphery. And I can tell you, having the library as a partner in that or having the library engaged, it's really positive. Those little community fairs mean an awful lot for those small.
Sure thing.
And they're very well attended. Any other questions? I don't think I see any. Eh bien. Oh, sorry, Cece. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to echo the fact that the, the, the programs in that fifty hours that we're having are awesome. I can't, I can't help but, but, but indicate that a lot of people didn't even know where our libraries were, much less the fact that we had them. And, and, and when they go into the buildings and they, and they see what's available and they see the overall ambiance that's involved with not only the, 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 the learning aspect of it, but the whole idea of being there. Yeah, if there was a way that we could look at expanding that, and I appreciate we're probably at the max for twenty twenty-three, but yeah, I, I think it's one of those programs that you know, especially when it comes to young people, it keeps them off the street and I don't mean that in a negative way. I mean that in a very positive way. And, and because they're, they're taking the time that they're not on the street and they're, and, and they're developing a skill or, or, or they're a, a personal awareness that they may or may not have had the opportunity to, 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 to get in touch with. And so thank you very much for doing that. And I, I surely do hope that, that we expand that program as much as we can afford to.
Thank you, Cece. Eh bien, Francais, Hillary, merci beaucoup pour la présentation.
Yeah, thank you very much. It was great to be with you all. Thank you.
Take care. Okay, I have a motion. Be it resolved at the Halliburton County Public Library, receives for information the twenty twenty-three programming presentation for the information, for, for information purposes. Moved by Paul, seconded by Tim. There you go. Now, anything else on our agenda? Let's go round table. Would any one of our elected officials want to comment on anything on the round table that would be of interest to us? No? Okay. All sound good? All right, thank you. Do we need a closed session? No, no. Lisa, Lisa, you're sitting there. Do you have any questions for us?
Um, no, sorry. I was a bit late to the meeting, so I'll have a look at Chris's report and if I have anything from that, I will contact him.
As with all the other boards I'm on, Lisa, that's the best thing to do because the, the CEO's reporters always all the meetings.
Exactly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next meeting is April thirteenth, three o'clock. Here or via Zoom, but hopefully everybody can be here. Last, the most important thing, could I have a, a motion to adjourn the meeting? Moved by Cece. Thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned.
I just want to let you know that I may or may not.